I still cannot understand you.
Can you hear us now?
Yes, I hear you.
It is Tuesday. May eighteenth. It is five thirteen.
Mayor James. Vice Mayor Savino. Commissioner Davis. Commissioner Llewellyn. Commissioner Rodman. City Manager Garcia. Okay, City Attorney Ansboro. I see you. Thanks.
This with. And then. Parks, um, delivery, all that needs. Recreation center. Who? All. Of all. Um, and who's? Um, clearly, the delivery of all that needs construction. And we were made to send. Including this speaker, um, ensuring that all the excuse you could not. Say in the top of the head. When you hear, um, any of the access to use in this space. Um, also, um, we would model that standard. We have. Which you want to start. All of the difference. Spacks models of our space. And they would have to go down to this presentation, um, or recreation together. Working with, uh, however, as I would. Be able to give you some of the numbers, including some of these great divisions in Africa. Um, on several parts of the planet. Um, just for your recommendation. It will be a whole religion. So what we've done is taken fourteen hours.
In our city, um, where we believe that we can greatly invest, um, in, in parks and recreation. And when I say parks and recreation, I mean parks, recreation, education, cultural and social activities that occur in a park setting in all these community rooms. Right now, we're very limited to what we, we can offer. And parks is something that we should offer from kids from two to ninety-eight. So. The smaller community parks that we have, we believe that, um, we can invest in, in-house in those and we can also look into, um, grant, but also pay as you go financing and budgetary appropriations. Um, the, the recommendation of the addition of our, of our beam team to be able to take care of, um, litter control, graffiti removal, the maintaining of hardscapes, uh, the beach cleaning, the streets, the roadways and other wider ways and infrastructures, um, will greatly help us with those existing small parks. What I wanted to do at this time is turn it over, um, to our finance director. To be able to discuss with you, um.
Maybe if we can try and mute, uh, turn our mics off if we are need.
Maybe, maybe, and, and even our phones, if we can put our phones in silent mode, maybe that could help. Thank you. So what Frank is going to do now is, is take us through how we take this vision and this desire to make this happen, um, commencing as soon as possible, um, to all the different options that we have, ensuring that we are solid still with our finances. So with that said, I'm going to turn it over to Frank.
Ralph, can you switch to the presentation? And share screen? Okay, thank you, manager, and. Ralph, can you cue me through the slides? Or can I cue you through because the clicker's not working?
The next slide is where Frank come, there you go, right there.
Alright, so, thank you. So we have. There's an investment strategy here. It's either what everybody was, is most familiar with, which would be like a general obligation bond. There's a voter referendum. Voters decide if they ultimately approve the bond issue, then we start issuing bonds and you start building parks. There's pros and cons with that versus doing a bank loan, which is literally just we put out a request for, for quotations from banks and, and they issue loans to the city and that, um, and there's pros and cons to that. So starting with the general obligation bond. We could get a longer term, we can go out thirty years, maybe forty years financing, which lowers our annual payment. We just paid the debt back longer. And, um, that would be secured by a separate ad valorem millage. So every year when it comes to budget, you don't have to, to budget for this every year. It's just automatically going to be levied on the taxpayers. That's what the point of the referendum is. Um, there's some issues with it though, because you're talking if, if what we're recommending would be as early, I mean, a year or two from now for a bond issue and then another year before you can actually get things going. You're talking three to four years before you actually break ground on a project. And that's not ideal because the need is here right now. There's uncertainty of whether the voters are actually going to approve it. And then what do you do at that point if they don't approve it? You could, you could still issue bank loans, but then you'd be going against the will of the electorate, basically. And that's not a good thing. And then, as I mentioned, you're going to pay them back longer than you would on a bank loan, which even though you, you could possibly get a lower interest rate with a geo bond, you'll have a higher total cost because the length of the loan is longer. It's kind of like if you do a fifteen-year loan on your house versus a thirty-year, the fifteen-year, your payment's higher, but you're paying your interest for a shorter period of time and, and generally, you're going to pay less interest over time. Okay? Now, on a bank loan, as I mentioned, um, is opposite from the geo bond. You have quick access to, to the money. We could, if you want to move this forward today, we could have money in the bank by the end of the calendar year, ready to go, as soon as we can get a shovel in the ground. So the projects are going to start a lot faster, you're going to have a lower total cost of borrowing because it's going to be a shorter term. The max we can do on a bank loan is about a twenty-year term. Um, and, but the issue with that is it's a higher annual payment because we're paying them off faster. And you're going to have to appropriate that annually in the budget through the budget process. It just becomes, I mean, it's not that you couldn't pay the debt, but it just becomes this thing that's competing with all the other government services. So you have to be aware of that. It's not just going to automatically get levied like a, like a military. So, um, but with all that, um, being said, we recommend the bank loan financing because it's going to get you access to the money faster and get the project started faster and, um, and start, start getting to these badly needed projects. So, next slide, please. So, um, kind of what I said, you know, the sooner we get started, um, coinciding with the, with the financing coming in towards the end of the year, you could begin with CW Thomas and say Chester Bird Park. Those are two components of the master plan. You could begin designing them this fall and have construction starting a few months after that. Just as quickly as they can get designed and approved, you can start building as long as the financing in place and probably to complete within about a year from then, so maybe spring of twenty-three. CW Thomas, you cut the ribbon and everybody's having fun. So, um, the next phase would be to go then PJ Millie and Frost Park. The timing of that, obviously, there's going to have to be some staggering. You don't want to close everything at once and then nobody has anywhere to recreate. You wouldn't want to be doing the CW Thomas pool and the PJ Millie pool at the same time either, for obvious reasons. So, um, there has to be some smart staggering about how these projects are commenced. But you could design, begin the design in the, the fall of next year, as CW Thomas is already well underway. Starting your construction in spring of the following year, following the completion of CW Thomas. So that way, one's done and then the other one gets started. And that would be completed sometime probably in two thousand twenty-four and, and the end of that year. Next slide, please. Um, don't want to get too much into the, to the numbers, but, um, but CW Thomas is an approximate seventeen million dollar project. Um, I'm sure that you're going to see in a few moments when the, when our consultant goes through the plan, it's a, it's a pretty large facility, there's a lot going on at that park, it's a complete reimagining of that site. So, um, there is a high cost. Talking with our financial advisors, twenty years, get us around two and a half percent this year, if we were to move this forward quickly. So the debt service on that's about one point million dollars, one point one million dollars a year. Now, we also have in the current year's budget around two hundred and fifty thousand dollars towards CW Thomas improvements. If we decided to scrap the whole park and redevelop it right now, we wouldn't spend that two hundred and fifty thousand, which was budgeted towards new, uh, multipurpose courts and a new playground. So what we suggested is we can take that money and put that towards the design to get started on this project. That money's already in the current year budget. Um, the next phase being PJ Millie Frost Park, issuing in twenty twenty-three, thirty-two and a half million combined. Uh, maybe we'd be at three percent by then. We, we do think interest rates are going to stay low for a while, it could even be lower than that because things may just not, um, inflation might not happen. But, um, but we're thinking around three percent and that's around two point two million dollars a year. So the total combined debt service payment, once everything is online, is around three point three million a year. Now, we've talked previously about the police and fire pension payment that was around five million a year that we're no longer going to be making. So this, that money could be used to fund these projects. So we just need to be smart about how we budget going forward and not, um, not using all that money that we're freeing up in the budget for just ongoing operating. We need to make sure we keep that money set aside to allow us to have options like this for the next few years from now. Okay? Um, the projected millage rate equivalent of a three point three million dollar bond issue or of a, of a financing is around point six seven mils. Just so you know what the impact is, if you were to want to raise the millage rate to pay for this, which you definitely could do if you wanted to, not suggesting it. And, I'm sorry? The, the current millage rate? Uh, five point nine 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 eight. So, um, that's, that comes out to, for a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar assessed value, it's about a hundred and sixty-eight dollars a year cost. Now again, not suggesting you do that, but that's just what the impact would be. If you ever got into a, um, situation where you had to, to raise the millage rate to cover this, that's what we're looking at. Um, so it's a pretty modest impact on an average homeowner in the city.
Or, or you can, we can always do a hybrid.
Exactly. You could, you can offset a portion of the financing with a little bit increase in the millage. It just, it really all depends on all the competing priorities in the city, you know, going on right now. So, um, next slide, please. So by twenty twenty-four, all the master plans, all the studies that are being worked on right now on the city infrastructure, the public safety, uh, situation, the historical properties, which we're looking at right now and trying to decide what to do with, all that's going to be completed. And, um, that's, there's a possibility for a future referendum. Um, we wouldn't do the geo bond for the parks and then do another one for other stuff. So recommending that you take on this new debt for the, for the bank loans for the parks and then look forward to a twenty twenty-four referendum that focuses on major infrastructure in the city and other unattended issues that need to be taken care of. So, um, you have Fire Station One, possibly expanding that, possibly adding on another police component there, um, and other investments in public safety, which would lead to enhancements in the public safety service in this city. You have the historic homes, the restoration and possible relocation of those, which could be considered. And then any other infrastructure needs, um, major road issues, major drainage issues, other things that could be handled at that time that are, um, spoken for through these various studies that, that are going on currently. So, you know, three years into the implementation of the strategic plan, um, having started the parks projects, things are going to be taking shape in the city and we're going to be in a different place a couple of years from now. A lot of progress going on and it could lead to, um, a really successful voter referendum going forward to take care of the rest of the needs in the city. So, um, and we wouldn't recommend you do this any sooner than the twenty twenty-four, um, election, just because, um, the timing of it, you, you need a lot of time, there's a long run-up to this and you need a lot of runway to, to get there if you want to have a successful takeoff. So.
Well, and, and I think the voter confidence comes from what have you done? So if they were to see, you know, the, the, the successful game plan that we have, you know, from like groundbreaking to ribbon cutting, they could say, wow, these folks really know how to manage the money and, and deliver. So that's how I seen it work in cer- in, in certain city. This is very bold, but there's an urgency here because, guys, I will tell you, our, our parks are very, very subpar, subpar, and we cannot project in addition ten thousand year residents and continue with what we have. I, I met at lunch today with, uh, Deputy Chief, uh, Holmes, and we talked about the correlation of prime and lack of green space. Um, and, and our parks right now are really set up a little bit. You know, our parks are not inclusive for adults, for folk, uh, for co-ed, for young men, young women. We don't have diversity in our program. We have a great team of individuals and our team is getting better and better. But if we don't have those facilities, we're not going to deliver what I know you guys want to deliver.
I wrote down a couple of things that were talked about, Frank, when you were discussing the, um, the geo bond versus the loan. And, and I'm, I'm, I can tell you, I've always been in favor of getting this stuff done now. And the geo bond would take to twenty twenty-four, and like you say, it may not even pass. And we're back, we're, we're getting nowhere. So I know that we're using some of the, of the money that was, I don't have the paper from here, but we had the, the retirement plans that we're finishing up on and using that money, that's, that's fine. The, uh, some of the questions I have with some of the monies that are being dispersed, you know, CW Thomas is in need of, of a major overhaul and I, I saw it and I agree with it. But I do have a question on that and PJ Millie, uh, unless the overhaul plan that comes into place, those pools are very large, why can't they be fitted to the master plan where they could be resurfaced and stuff and saved? So those are probably a hundred thousand dollars each. And, uh, I'll, I'll, I'll address all the questions and you can give me the answers. But, uh, I, I mean, I think that, uh, that they're dug, they're there, the facilities are, you know, the decky maybe need to be changed, uh, the mar siting maybe changed, but to dig a whole new infrastructure on the pool. I, I'm a little confused on that. I know that, uh, our, um, uh, that, uh, my notes. You know, and the other thing too is if we don't do the pools like that and, you know, and you're just, and you're, and you're start to do these, if the loan is out, I don't understand if you're going to do, why we can't, on the RFP, why we can't get the, uh, projects where at least, uh, two of the parks would be like Frost in CW uh, or PJ Millie in Frost, because if the pools are going to be done without that, there's no need to shut down Frost Park and why can't we do two parks at a time? While we're doing that with the loan that's out, because that Frost Park does not have a pool unless your new parks program has a pool, uh, being put into that. I didn't, I don't know if we're going to show that later or not. But I, I mean, I'm anxious to see all the parks get up to par as quickly as possible. I know that we've talked about the, um, the rates of the, uh, tax, uh, on there. I know that you're talking about, our, our tax rate is at five point nine nine. That does not include any of the assessment charges on geo bond or anything else that's added to it, buyer assessment, stuff like that. That would not change, uh, and the reason I'm, if you had some mention on there that some of these services that we wouldn't have, that we wouldn't have to wait on some of the investments. But you know, in the meantime, we're still, our general funds are growing by the day from all the new property values that are coming in through Broward County Tax Assessor's Office. So you didn't include that in your, in your conversation, uh, where I would think that our general funds are going to grow between six and ten million dollars in the next two or three years. Am I correct?
Well, so let, let me, let me address some of the, some of your questions, including the, the, the pool, the pools and, and, um, why we're recommending this, and then I'll turn it over to, um, to, to Frank. We, we wouldn't be sitting here if we, if we hadn't recaptured monies that we were using every year. And that, that is complete. Um, so that's why we're having this conversation and also the urgency. And all those years that we were just putting Band-Aids, we were just putting Band-Aids and pretending that, that that was okay. Um, so I'm, I'm going to talk about the, the parks in regards to the pools because the con- the configuration of, of PJ Millie and, and the configuration of CW are, are two of the most horrific configurations of parks that I have ever seen in my life. I am not going to sit here ever and talk to you about things that I don't know about. I'll turn it over to those that, that specialize in, in IT or other areas that, that I'm not strong at and that's why we have this team. But when it comes to parks and recreation, this is something that I've been studying since nineteen eighty, with my first job being in the city of Miami in nineteen eighty-three. And I've been, I've been seeing how things could be done right. So if, if we're looking to cut corners and save, you're, you're thinking that you're saving, but at the end, and also watch HGTV. So sometimes building new versus trying to, to keep things where, where they're at, thinking that you're going to save. But look, at the end of the day, we're going to have architects that are here and engineers look at things. So if somebody tells me, hey, you know, manager, we can save a million dollars by leaving the pool here, but working on this and this. But when we signed and we went over these designs, we're maximizing the space. When we maximize the space and whether you're doing it at your own home, sometimes a total gut job is so much better than trying to put lipstick on a piglet. I mean, and I can just, just, just as honest as I can be with you.
That's why I said that the master plan may cause, you know, to relocate certain things, but I was just asking that question because of the thought process, but I understand what you're saying.
No, and, and look, all these projects that we're seeing, that we're seeing shovels and cranes, you know, from Bryant all the way to Federal, all the way to Danny Beach Boulevard, we don't get a penny from them until we have the.
CO.
The CO on them. And those are coming online. So we, we're just showing you something that we can do. But with this guy as our finance director, hybrids and shifting gears. And this is what, this is the silver lining of COVID, that, that it takes leadership to be able to switch those gears. So if some of those projects come online more, we can always continue to, to do a hybrid here. Now, eh, we, we looked at CW and maybe we could take a closer look and, 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 we didn't want to close PJ and CW because the kids from CW will go swim at, at the PJ Millie pool. Now, maybe we can look at, at, at Frost or the exterior of Frost, like the ball fields, and maybe wait on the actual extension of, of the infrastructure, the brick and mortar. So if, if you're looking at Frost from, from the exterior, for example, the, the softball component that we discussed, we can take that phase of Frost and maybe incorporate it with this first phase of, of Chester Bird and, and CW. So there's several hybrids that we could do, but we have these monies, it's, it's a good time to borrow and it, it's really, our, our parks are truly an embarrassment. And if we do that right, which I know we will, then a referendum for everything else that we need will be super, super easy.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Um, Frank, did you want to add anything to that?
No, um, I mean, I mean, it's a really good point about the fact that the city, the development that's coming online is only going to add to the tax base, it's only going to increase the ad valorem that's coming in, uh, more impact fees coming in. And, you know, all this is really setting the table for a really stable five to ten years in the city. You know, with, with what it's got going on in its, inside of itself. I mean, obviously, there could be a, another market crash. Anything could happen that could affect everybody. But the city, the city of Danny Beach is in a real prime position right now. The, the, I mean, the amount of development is, is tremendous and that's only going to add to the tax base. We, we have really good prospects for the budget this year, we don't have the numbers yet from VCPA, but, uh, but it's looking good. And, um, and if we keep having years like this, then, then a lot of the concerns that you have go away because we're creating more room in the budget. As long as we don't just sort of like, like bloat into it, you know, like you get a raise at work and then all of a sudden you just start spending more money. It's kind of the same thing, like, we have to be smart about how we utilize these extra monies and how we add personnel. Keeping in mind that all these new facilities are going to require more people. So we have to also know that, okay, once that facility comes online, we've got to have that extra budget. And I know Eric and his team can talk more about that, um, but, but all those things have to be. And then the maintenance of these facilities and the cleaning and all that. So, so it's a lot to consider right now.
And, and it's also very important to note that, that a facility, um, will be there for, for, for twenty, thirty, forty years if we continue to do the proactive maintenance that we're doing now because you guys have given us the, the budgetary dollars to have the personnel. Not like the days that it was just Willie, Joe and Logan taking care of all the facilities and did we not pay the price for being, for being penny wise and pound fools. But one thing I will tell you, in a very successful parks program, you're going to have some things that you could do in-house, where you can partner with JCC, Boys and Club, Boys and Girls Club, Y M C A. There are certain things that we can run in-house, but certain things that we can partner with other service delivery people that are also very much bring a lot of expertise to, um, to the table. Now, mind you, we all, we are still going to maintain in our reserves, not what is asked of us, but what we are comfortable with in case something happens. You know, look how long it took us to recover and how many times we went to Tallahassee to make sure that we got those monies from FEMA. But that was an event that happened in twenty seventeen and it wasn't until last year, three years it took us to get that money back. So our reserves are, are always going to be sound. We're one of, of, of very few cities that I've ever worked with that on top of that, you have an eight thousand dollar reserve.
Eight million.
Eight million, I'm sorry, eight million. Sorry, 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 sorry. Don't, don't forget that. In addition to our record-setting twenty-five million dollar reserves that the city has never had, and we cannot continue to pile on those reserves and not to begin to work on those reserves and begin to deliver to the, to the people, but that eight million, you also have for catastrophic things. So. Yeah.
I have a question has to do with finances as well. Um, given the fact that it's two parts, so let me just ask those questions and you can answer. If we're going to be getting more money coming in from these various projects that are ongoing right now and in the next couple of years is when we're going to start seeing the money coming in from those, would it be possible in the future that we wouldn't necessarily even need to go for a geo bond? And if that were the case, would you recommend that?
It, it depends on a couple of things. Um, like I talked to our, our financial advisor about this one, the, the, the park situation right now. And I said, well, we have really healthy reserves, we have a lot that we can put towards this. What if we put some of our cash on the table and borrow the rest? And he said, we just did a financing for one and a half percent. You know, he's like, you can't get money this cheap. Borrow it all, don't, don't use your money, keep your money. And, um, as much as we can borrow, I think we will. It gets to the point where in two, three, four years from now, if you start to see inflation creeping and now we're at four, five percent cost of borrowing, maybe it makes a little more sense to use some of our funds and do some more pay as you go. And not only borrow for the things that we just, hey, you want to do it and, and let's just get the voter approval. But, um.
But then wouldn't it make more sense then to just do bank financing as opposed to the geo bond? Because, I mean, people are already complaining about the taxes going up and it has nothing to do with us. It has to do with other part, other fees and whatnot throughout the county. And, and, right, so, so I, I personally, and I, I have a feeling pretty much everybody agrees, we don't want to raise taxes, um, for any reason. Because it's one of those things, if taxes go up on homeowners and then you're also going to have rent, rents go up as well because people that own the homes are going to end up having to raise the rents. So, I, I mean, I'd much rather there is a way that we don't have to do the geo bond and ask people to, to increase their taxes in the city of Danny Beach to pay for that because that's essentially what it is, the tax. because that's essentially what it is, the tax. It would make more sense, and I'm just trying to figure out if that really is, if it makes more sense to do that, if it would make a difference if we were to do that.
It, it all depends on, on what it is that you want to do for that 2024 referendum. Like, we, you would have to scope out all the projects if it's a matter of, of expanding on Fire Station One because of the impact of all the growth in the city. But we have impact fees, and we're just continuing to collect more and more impact fees towards public safety that we could use to do an extension of Fire Station One or an addition of a police substation there. Um, there's, there's ways that we can do it. Um, that would be the next step after, I, I think it all plays together. Obviously, it's a big plan and, and we want to make sure we're doing everything in sync. But, um, but the, the critical need with the parks, that, I think that's best addressed with the bank loan right now. Once that, we get that ball rolling, the next step is, okay, now we're going to look at a geo bond. It's 2022. We're two years out. Are we going to do the, you know, and then you can start going through that thought process at that time.
And, and you also have, uh, a, a bond, a debt that expires in 2025, correct?
Yeah, and that's on the slide here at the bottom.
So in, in one of those slides, you would, you will see that in 2025, we had, we have a debt that, uh, the, like, that, um, the residents are paying into, the homeowners are paying into, and that goes away in 2025. So, so maybe if we want to consider a geo because we have certain needs and the community has, has seen, um, what we've done, and basically we would take that off because we're done with, with that payment. And like Frank says, if, if we're growing, and I know that, that, that fire and maybe looking at, uh, uh, you know, a public safety campus, and that's something that, that could be a good geo bond. You see all the drainage projects that we have on, we have eight, which is like record-setting, and the residents are very, very happy. But we're throwing 2024 as, as a, as a date, but it could easily be 2025 based on what the residents have, have seen, and, and, or it may go away altogether. We may not need it because of, of everything that's coming in.
Yeah, I know, and I know it's down the road. It's not, but I'm just trying to look at a global perspective and trying to look down the road because, you know, people, I mean, there's people that are, are unhappy with all the development that's going on, and, and if you're going to be doing, if that's going to continue, we need to be able to show that there's something that's coming, that they're getting for that, you know, although this might be happening, this is where the money is going. This is what we're doing. It's not going into things that you don't want. It's going into the things that we all want. So I, I'm just trying to, I'm, I'm trying to plan down the road and figure out a way without having to raise taxes, without having to ask for a geo bond, where we're having to essentially put out another tax and try to do it the, the way that it should be done if possible.
Well, and just, and also, I mean, it kind of should be in the mix too, is this new American Rescue Plan that's coming out. City, city was allocated over $13 million. We're going to get, getting half of that in June. And although they've issued, they're calling it the interim final rule, which is the guidance that we're supposed to be following, which is very clear that it can only be used for water sewers and sort of stormwater projects. But a lot of other cities and counties all around the nation have submitted comments to ask, well, what about fire stations? What about other critical infrastructure? But we also know we have a looming infrastructure plan that could be funding some of that. But, um, there's a possibility that these new ARPA money could be, they could change the guide to say, yes, we're going to allow you to use this for other infrastructure. And you could see, now that has to be spent by 2024, by the end of 20, so you have a little over three years to spend that money. But, um, but that could be used for some of these other things that, and, and again, maybe avoiding some of that bond issue question. So, and things are, are pretty open right now. It's, it's hard to lock us in anyone.
And we may not need that, that geo bond like Frank says.
That's what I'm thinking. I, it just, just knowing that there, it's not just the money that's here now, and that we do have a very healthy reserve. The fact that we do have $6 million coming from the, the pension, the fact that, that this other thing is going to end, $300,000 isn't going to have to be paid on a regular basis anymore. So, you know, I mean, it's just, there's the opportunity there, and I'd rather utilize our own assets. I mean, saving is great, and I, and I'm a firm believer in saving and making sure you have that money, but if, if we're going to spend it on something, this seems like something we should be spending.
Well, and, and what's great about that, that, the, the $6 million that, that's coming and the rest of the money that's coming down the pipeline, that we will be able to use for infrastructure projects that may have been covered by the, um, by the bond issuance, which we may not need. So, but we, you guys talked about, about a geo bond, but when we continued our research, we said, wait a minute, we're not this administrator, administration, and this is not that mayor and vice mayor and commission that wants to wait to put a shovel on the ground and thank, thank God and, and thank, you know, you and, and us. We're in a very, very, very strong, strong position. So at this time, what I'm going to do is I'm going to turn it over to our Parks Director and, um, our, our representative from Vermelo Ammila to take it from here. And, um, we'll go from there.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, City Managers, City Attorney, Staff, Eric Brown, Parks and Recreation Director. Um, just real quick, just reiterate just a little bit on what the manager and, and Frank was talking about. Um, it is time. We, we are in a situation now where, um, parks are, subpar. Parks are, are at a place where there's time because of the growth that we're seeing in our city, and Frank just, um, shared that with you guys. I want to share something with you guys that I found out from, um, Cassie, our Assistant Director, today that we have over $30,000 worth of registration as of today for summer camp. We have a park that has never had, uh, uh, that I'm not aware of, but we have 12 or 15 kids registered at PJ Millie today. And all paying parents, all paying, uh, um, uh, parents. So we are, we are definitely busting out of the scenes. We had a, we had a basketball tournament with older people, and you know, I'm one of those guys where my knees are bad, so I need a gym floor. I need some parquet. I need to look like I'm in the Boston Celtics arena, so. So, you know, because, and then we played out on a Saturday, and Cassie did an amazing job, um, you know, facilitating that. But those guys are like me. We over the hill and our knees are a little bad. But what I want to talk about, and I want to turn it over to, um, Randy from BNA, is that we all know that when people come to a city, when parents come to a city, when investors come to a city, they look at parks and schools. I'm in communication with Olson today. They've got 100 kids that they want to bring to our Swim Central program this summer. And so that's going to open up an avenue for us to start talking to, uh, Education Advisory Board, so we can attend some of those Broward County meetings and say, Collins Elementary needs to have something done to it. When CW Thomas go up under the, because I'm just confident that we going up under the shovel, that we going, the dirt will be lifted up this year. Uh, I'm ready to go to, to the county and say, now let's do something with Collins. Because when people come to a city, they look at schools and parks. People want recreation. They want to know that their kids are in a safe environment when it's time for them to go to work. So, um, you know, it, it is time. Uh, I see him talk about our Bean Team, and we're being proactive, and we're being proactive to make sure that we're doing everything possible that we can do for what we have. And I tell people, you, you give me something to work with, and I'm going to make it happen, regardless of the situation or regardless of how, look, we're going to make it happen. We're going to program it, but now we need to come up with the times. And what I mean by that is, uh, Candido did an amazing job. We talked about the Bean Team. And it just brought back, uh, brought back to my memory that I started a Bean Team in Hollywood over 25 years ago, and I called it the Park Ranger Program. And the bringing the city to Danny Beach is vitally important to everything that we're about to do. And lastly, before I turn it over to Randy, um, all these facilities that we're talking about, and they're going to be fantastic facilities, but we're going to have to bring in 18 employees to run them. We're going to have to bring in 18 maintenance teams to upkeep them. And that, uh, that is going to be a recurring fee that we're going to have to look at also. So if we can have all of them go down at one time, which we, you know, we can't, you know, if we take CW Thomas down now and those kids can go to Frost or, or PJ Millie, and we can still have recreation, because we're going to make it happen regardless. If we have to set up a, a trailer or, or portable tent, whatever. But, you know, we want to look at it realistically and just say, okay, we, we take one down, we have one open, and, and we just, I'm excited. Um, because of what is about to take place in the city of Danny Beach. I came here a little over two years ago with excitement because I grew up here, and I'm just excited about what's getting to take, getting ready to take, because I'm going to start crying, I'm getting emotional. But, but I'm really, I'm really excited about what's getting ready to take place. Um, so I thank you, you, you guys, and I, and I know that we're going to make the right decision because we have an A-team in the city of Danny Beach. You know, I bragged on the city of Danny Beach, and, and my colleagues of old from Hollywood was like, man, you went to that small city. I said, big things come in small packages. So with that being said.
Before you turn it over to Randy, I, you know, I, I spoke to you today because we had two calls today about two parents that want to put their kids at Frost. And what's, you want to tell the elected officials, we're, what's the situation at Frost for summer camp?
We're booked. We, we already booked. And I said, man, give me that number. Let me talk to, to the staff, and let me, let me call that parent, and we'll see what we can do. And that's because, um, we're doing recreation right. That's because we are out there paving the, the pavement to make it happen. Um, and, and, and people are seeing that. People want to put them, put their kids and, and their adults and their seniors in places where they can feel that they're going to prosper at a young age or an old age, and that's what we need to do. So what we have to do now is to bring our subpar facilities up to the standard of the 21st century or the 22nd century. We getting prepared for the next century. I don't know, but we just have to be prepared to bring everything up to where it is. And, and, and Vice Mayor, I hear you when you said, you know, I'm HGTV also, but I hear you when you talk about the pools. Well, I was about 10 years old when I swam in CW Thomas Pool. I'm 55 today, well, so.
It is that, it is that old.
I was 10 years old, and my mama brought me down to
Yes.
It was, it was Modela Park, and she said, we're going to go, I don't want to go swim there, but we went and swam there. And what need to take place with our pools, guys, is because we have people, kids that are doing a lot of swimming, and we need swim meets, and our pools are not adequate enough to handle the swim meets.
Well, let's not forget ADA.
And ADA and all of those.
The older, you know, generation, I mean, we, the baby boomers, we're just getting older. Yeah.
Okay.
I, I just want to add something. Randy. I'm sorry. I want to add something. Not only are we talking about the need for the pools, we need adequate pools, both at CW Thomas Park and PJ Millie, because there's a large part of our city that does not know how to swim. And it is hard to get swimming programs, especially at CW Thomas Park, because it, the pool used to be deeper. Then I think someone drowned, and then they made it where it was shallow, a little bit of deep shallow. It was, because I grew up, my cousin was the, um, lifeguard, and how she taught us how to swim, she just threw us in the pool. Yeah, traumatized. I, I don't recommend, I do not recommend. One star. Do not recommend not, not doing that. But we, we need to be able to have the lifeguards, and also the lifeguard program is booked up too for camps. So I think we're in a great situation with our parks and recreation. We have a lot of, you know, um, traffic going through, but we need to really have, um, valuable first-class Danny Beach things with our brand to be able to offer the people that are coming into our city.
And before, before, before you get started, um, two things.
Randy.
We created, we created, but we created some, uh, sketches, so you guys can actually see what our parks actually look like. So we blew them up so you can see them, and we'll keep those, um, in our facilities. And also, and I, I do forgive me, Cassie, but Cassie Warren has done a fantastic job, and I do want to, um, point that out. She has, she has commented, she has taken us to another level, and I, and I want to just publicly say that she has done a fantastic job, and the best is still yet to come because, uh, I'm still here.
Can I, can I just, just?
Can we turn it over to Randy?
I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
And, um, manager, can I just, didn't we talk about at one point, like, if we, if we ended up with the Olson property, that we might put that, make an aquatic complex there? Because there's nothing on the east side.
That, that's still something that we can master.
I mean, it's down the road. I know that, but I'm just, again, it's just, because, again, it's true. We don't have enough list for people to learn how to swim, so. Right, and I try, well, they, they also need the facilities at the school too, so we, I mean, I know there's a shared agreement there, but, um, but I know that, you know.
Just a little bit on hold on to, like, the whole superintendent thing.
I know.
There was a little snag in the dialogue.
I know, I know, I know, but.
But trust me, we got the pulse of that.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Randy.
I had worked closely with Eric, the city manager, on building the substandard parks. I think all of you have this long document. This is a copy of the park plan I'm going to show you. Okay, so it, it's got every slide that I'm actually go through. If you want to look that way on the screen. Basically, what we want to do is to, um, go through and show you the, the key parks, the plans, the process, and the work that we did on developing the plans for those parks. The, uh, four parks that we're going to cover are CW Thomas, Frost Park, PJ Millie, White, um, White, and Chester Bird Park. And we have three of those park plans up here, and all of the park plans are in the book that we're looking through right now. Uh, to go through each of the parks, we have some pictures here that show you the existing conditions, and, you know, they're maintained very well. That's certainly not a problem. I think it's, the problem is the facilities. And when you get a pool that's 45 years old, you know, technology has changed.
Yeah.
And that's very, very important. Um, sports has changed, attitudes have changed. What is in today is not in 20, 30 years ago. What's important to the community today is not necessarily what was happening 20, 30 years ago. So we've had to rethink the, the parks for the most part, but we need to keep in mind what was there. We, we weren't just, you know, the bulldozer was not the primary factor. We were just trying to create the best park we could and see how that fit the site. Clearly, Chester Bird Park, a beautiful site from the point of trees, absolutely beautiful canopy of trees. Uh, it's really unique in that it has that kind of canopy. We've taken that park and really completely redeveloped it. You have new playgrounds. You have, um, a new basketball courts. You have an interactive water feature in the center, which is something that kids all over the city, and I can tell you, you've done maybe eight or nine interactive water features.
Yep.
They become our playgrounds for pools because you don't have to worry about your children drowning. You can go there and not even have to look at them every minute, and the kids love interactive water features. And, uh, we're doing three right now in different communities because they're so popular. Uh, also, we have onsite parking, which the site in course doesn't have now. And we also have restroom facility. When you put in an interactive water feature in, you have to have restrooms to be able to help build. So that would be another nice advantage for the park, to be able to come to the park for the day and have restroom right there on the site. We've done a complete, um, cost estimate on the, I can't read that, so I assume you can try to read it. The cost estimate on the, um, park and broke it down to all the different components. And I will note that all of the cost estimates were done back in 2019. So there is a significant change in the market right now because of COVID and sort of the ending of COVID has changed the market for construction considerably, and that will have an impact on all the numbers we're looking at. And right now, no one can actually predict how high some things will go, like metal, wood, uh, contractor pricing and all things like that. But the, the prices you see in that document were effective for the 2019. Uh, this was just over, is it three or two? $2,416,000 for that park, is the estimated cost for redeveloping it. The second park is PJ Millie, which, um, you know, very actively used every time we went there. There were a lot of people. But again, outdated facility. Uh, it doesn't have a deck area, it's neither. It doesn't have a relationship park-wise. The entire park itself is actually not very functional, um, in the building. You know, pushed in one corner, you've got a whole area behind the building that's sort of this no man's land that you don't want to walk back into because it's a little scary. Uh, there's, you know, places that are not seen by people tend to be places you don't want to go, and you get all kinds of problems. So you really want to open the park up to full circulation as much as possible for vehicular circulation and pedestrian circulation. And you can see with the new plan, we actually brought a rotor on the top and side, so the whole park now becomes much more accessible. You don't have to park and walk, you know, three blocks to get deep in the park. Really now with this new plan, all of the park is very closely accessible to parking, which is really a key element. And the relocation of the community center and pool to the center of the park really allows us to expand all the different uses around the hillside edges. It's really going to be a spectacular park when we're done, and it is a complete revamp of what the park is now.
I mean, look at that multipurpose field. It's like huge.
Yes. And the multipurpose field will serve many different means, different sports, all things like that. Yep.
Put my mic on. Um, I've been to a lot of different parks, especially recently because my son runs track. And I have seen, um, the Orangefold type fields or, or developments of their sports complex. Um, Sunland Park, which is now Carter Park. You have Moore Park in Miami. There, there, there are a few parks. I'm wondering, um, are we going to have turf fields of these estimated? I'm wondering, um, are we going to have turf fields? Do these estimates include turf fields? Or, or are we going to, I, I would prefer turf fields, because the maintenance is low on those, and you get, you don't have to replace them so often. You look at our parks right now, it's a bunch of weeds, you know, they're just cutting weeds and keeping it low. But, um, I know Hollywood just did a revamp and, and redid all of their fields, but as far as ours, we've been waiting for, um, new, new turf, and it's very expensive, and I understand it, but if we're going to do this, I think we need to do it right. And if, you know, any of us have some connections with the Orange Bowl Committee, I know I have some, I'm sure you may have some, or with different people that would come in and partner, even if a developer wanted to come in and put their cost there, and it's called Dania Point Field, I don't care what it's called, as long as we're being paid for, and we're benefiting from it. So I, I think that, I don't, I'm not sure if this included, um, turf.
And when you say turf, I assume you mean the synthetic turf, as opposed to real sod?
Artificial turf.
Okay, yeah, I, I believe, and Eric, I believe all of these were priced as real sod and not synthetic.
Can I ask a question on that? Okay, you know, we, we talked about this, Mayor, when we were, when we were talking about doing the parks before, over at, uh, CW Thomas or the football fields, and I thought we did a long-range, um, you know, evaluation of putting turf in there versus artificial turf. And after the artificial turf, even though it was more expensive, again, with the maintenance on it, was over the 10-year plan that, that the turf was there for, it costs more money to maintain the park, because it, it torched the field, plus all the, uh, the, the gutting of, like, when the football fields get tore up stuff, the maintenance was a lot less. So, I mean, I agree with the mayor, I think if we're going to go borrow money, I think we should at least have cost estimate of what the differences are with an analization of the difference in, over a maintenance period, to see if we should make that decision now before we do it all.
I, I, I highly recommend that. I, I, I went back and checked out Doral when they first put their tough turf in, like, 10, 12 years ago. And, and that investment upfront will save you money in the long run, just like the hybrid car that I'm driving.
The thing, the other thing, too, every time that you, you put an artificial turf in, whether it's a softball field, baseball field, football field, if it rains and they have the drainage system underneath it, which is common for those artificial turf, we don't hold up any progress of any games that are going on.
If, if, if we can get those numbers on, on, for example, we're looking at PJ Millie, you have that multipurpose.
We have that, we, we're doing several synthetic turf fields right now, so we have the pricing right now for synthetic. I could give that to you, and we're doing a big one up in Pompano, one in Miami, we're doing several synthetic turf. Not everybody does it, because they have feelings about the whole synthetic turf, it's hotter. Um, you know, and whether, you know, how long does it last? It doesn't last forever. You, you have to eventually replace the synthetic turf, but I, I, you know, I'm, I'm a proponent of it, I think it's a great idea, and often what we'll do is pick one field in a park and do it in synthetic turf, and the other fields will be natural grass, so that you, the, the one field, though, that's heavily used is the synthetic turf, but I can find out the numbers.
It's hot.
Is that right?
Yeah.
And it's like a rug burn.
Soccer, baseball.
Soccer and base, soccer, baseball, softball, yeah.
Football doesn't need to drain as much as baseball, or, or soccer doesn't really either, but, uh, but.
Yeah, I know Tamarack has a great facility that, that we went and played against them, and it is a little hotter, but everything is hot in the summer. It's, I mean, and, and, and you just equip the kids, because you know, it's like having a rug burn, you equip them with proper equipment so that they're successful in their sports, but I think it's really a clean, crisp look, and you don't have to drag the field all the time for certain things, and line the field, and all the other maintenance.
Well, the amount of money that you spend on water, okay, let, let's not forget, in, in order to get the fields looking beautiful, it's always, I mean, the, the amount of work, not to mention the staff and, and the maintenance, but the amount of water and the sprinkler system that you have to install and put them on there, especially during the dry season, so, yeah.
We're doing one in Pompano, or, we're doing one in Pompano Beach right now, that went in this week. It's bright blue, and you sure can't get a bright blue, uh, football field in real turf. It's really bright.
I could have two different cost estimates.
I'm sorry?
I could have two different cost estimates on, on PJ Millie, I'm seeing two different numbers on them.
No, it, one is for the actual site work, and the other one is for the building, on all of them. So you combine the, the site work, which is all your sports facilities and walkways and sidewalks and playgrounds, but all the buildings were calculated as a separate line item.
The total funding on that was 11 million dollars?
Yeah, I don't have it in front of me, but when I get, yeah, you add the two different ones together.
You, you know what, I really like what the mayor said in regards to giving people sponsorship opportunities. You know, I mean, im- im- imagine, like, like he said, having our logo in the middle of that multipurpose field, you know, but just for, for, for signage, you know, whether it's, you know, Joe Milton, or Sharon Choroby, or, or, or any of the developers here, friends of the city. People's names. Yeah. Without a doubt. Sorry, Randy, but.
Oh, oh, please, thank you. Um, at PJ Millie, we did the full cost estimate as well, on, as I said, there's two actual cost estimates. One is for all of the onsite work, which came to 7.4 million. That's the actual, um, all the, the, the site work, and then the, the building came to, I'm sorry, I can't see, 11 mil, 11 million something, yeah. I apologize, it's hard to read from here. So that's the two parks out, the two numbers added together, give you the total budget for the redevelopment of the project. The, uh, next project is Frost Park, and here's where we actually did try to save money by using the existing building. It needs work, but it certainly was something that the city's invested in, and is a worthwhile investment to try to integrate in the park. So we use that as the base, and then the expansion of it to the east, over the, um, uh, skate track area would allow you to use the existing building and expand the, the square footage. So you can see here, uh, the existing site with the, uh, four different fields. We actually now turned this into three baseball, softball fields. There will be a, a, a field in the center for multipurpose when they're not playing baseball. You have the, uh, new, uh, addition to the, uh, community center. You have a, uh, concession, outdoor concession stand and an outdoor gym area, and brand-new playgrounds in the very heavily treed area to the east side of the, uh, site. Uh, I don't think this pointer. Yeah, it does. Uh, the, the playgrounds in this area with the fantastic trees we have. Uh, there's also an interactive water feature splash pad right in front of the community center as a focal point to the whole park. So again, it's going to be a spectacular redevelopment of that site, utilizing the existing building with some rehab to the building to bring it into, uh, the character for the rest of the park. Yes.
Are we going to theme certain parks different? Um, like, you can't get the same thing at this park that you can get at another park. I know a lot of our parks right now are cookie cutters, straight, everything is at every park. I mean, you have a dog park and a pool here and there, but all of the equipment and playgrounds look the same. I would really love if we had, um, maybe at Frost Park, I, I know that I saw with all of the, the wooded area and all of the trees, they have different types of seesaws that are made out of logs and things that are more environmentally friendly, and ways to just be creative with art. We, I haven't really seen the art component with this, I'm not sure if that comes later down the road, but I want to make sure that we are adding uniqueness to our parks, and that all of our equipment is ADA accessible. Maybe we have one park that is just specialized for special needs and different things that, you know, our residents of different needs can go to, but I don't want to have the same exact park playgrounds at every single park. Yeah.
In their parks, which was different at every site. So all these parks are designed differently, none of them are designed the same. And ADA will be accessible at all of our new sites, because you can't do it, because it's by law, you have to have it. And special needs equipment will be added at all of our sites now. Even what we're doing today, um, with, if we were to rebuild today, um, ADA accessible playgrounds, ADA accessible basketball courts, and all that stuff will be added in. So every single community is a different community, and what we did, we surveyed, surveyed those communities, and we asked them what would they want to see. And I'm just, real quick, when they talk about football, out in the West, they wanted soccer, you know, so we didn't need to build another football field, they're about a multipurpose field, where we can accommodate the soccer. So everything will look based on that community that we're building in, so we'll be there, yes.
And, and I want to add to that, too, um, nowadays, and, and you're right, the thinking 30, 40, 50 years ago, when these parks were being contracted, contracted, if every bench looked the same, every garbage can looked the same, ev- every planter looked the same. Right now, whether it's a climbing structure that could be an art piece, or whether it's a bench that could be a, a, a butterfly, or, or a turtle, or different color themes. Now, we're getting into the details.
Right.
But absolutely, we are not going to have that. In the 70s, it was very, very cookie style. You can even see it in the construction, you know, you know, you go to certain buildings, and they kind of, people were, you know, were still dealing with, with, with Russia and things like that, so you were building with very little windows, dark spaces. That construction has totally changed, and, and not just from, from homes, but facilities, and certainly parks.
Right.
The, the other thing is that the new playground companies have greatly changed their, their programs of what they have. You could do a park with rope structures, you could do a park with only swings, you could do a park, you could pick one company, which does save on maintenance issues, and just get an amazing array of different, you, you just don't plot the same equipment in every park. You know, we're doing some.
That gets the community going to each other's parks. The, the thinking was, we're going to do this at CW, so only the CW people pump it, no, 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 no. We, what we're doing is, we're moving staff around, and, and I've discussed this with Eric, and I've discussed this with somebody, there was that thinking, okay, all the black staff works at the black park, and the Hispanic park, the kids only play baseball, so this is what we're going to do. No, 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 no. Now, we want our communities to get to know each other. We want our kids to move around, because we're offering things at different parks. We're going to have a gymnasium at CW, we don't have a gymnasium at, at Frost, you know? So we're going to have some people come to, to Frost at times for certain things that we're not going to have at CW, same thing with, with PJ Millie. And, and that's the thinking behind this vision.
I didn't see a gymnasium, uh, not a basketball court.
There, yeah, there's a gym.
It's just, it's a building, it, it.
I see that in Thomas.
Yeah, there's a gymna, there's an indoor gymnasium.
How did I miss it?
He hasn't got to it yet.
No, I'm looking at a paper here.
Oh.
I see basketball court.
The.
There's one outside and the rest is inside.
The cost estimate for Frost Park was, uh, broken down into the, uh, site development, that was 3.8 million. And then the cost for the building, and boy, these numbers are hard to read even this close, I think it's 6.4 million, I apologize, it's just, it's so fuzzy, and I don't remember it off the top of my head, but it gives you a complete breakdown of all the different costs for the park. And then, of course, the last one is, uh, CW Thomas Park. Again, um, the pool is really under the facilities of what you need for a real neighborhood swimming pool, and a, a really, a, a class A facility. This is just not it. Um, you know, there's so much can be done to this site, and I think the master plan certainly shows a complete rethinking of how the community center works, how it interacts with the community, how you access the, um, uh, recreation center. We've placed it on the other corner with a pool, um, and new, uh, football field to the south of the community center. And when we design these parks, everything works with everything else, too. That's really important, because people are maybe going to the community center, then they're going out to the football field, maybe the parents are taking their children to the playground, while their, other kids are playing football, so how they all work on the site becomes very important. In this site, we actually, uh, have a parking lot in the center of the site to provide some parking, because all of the parking was on street, and we're able to increase the usability of the, uh, uh, park and for a special football events to accommodate a lot more people. Yes.
A lot of input. Um, is there a way, because I know we have these reciprocal use agreements with the schools, is there a way, when there are football games, that we can access the parking lot for, um, Collins Elementary? Or I'm not, I don't even know who owns, um, that vacant land, it may be St. Ruth, but I'm not sure. It may be St. Ruth or whatever, but there is opportunity to add additional parking back there, because, you know, when football season comes, it's, it's very hard to find any type of parking, and then you run into parking in people's driveways, and it's a big mess. So, um, the ability to be able to utilize Collins Elementary is going to be vital for us with this new program.
And with the reciprocal use agreement, we, we can meet with the principal and come up with that as well. Yeah.
And then, um, of course, we did the, uh, cost estimate based on that, uh, program for that plan that you just saw. And the, uh, building came, or the site plan came to 4.5 million, or, and the building is that, the building and the pool is 10 point, uh, million dollars for those, uh, components of the park. It's a, a significant community center and, uh, pool facility on that plan. And that's the presentation. Thank you. We're also very excited. There's nothing more rewarding than doing a parks master plan and then seeing a community build the parks. It's just, it's the most fantastic feeling to know that, uh, those parks will get used by the community, rather than just sitting on a shelf as a document. And so it's really exciting to see that you're moving forward with the parks.
Thank you, Randy.
Thank you.
Thank you. I know that you had a, um, something that was pertaining to, um, Olson Middle, although it's not in here. We did have, like, just some discussion items of what it possibly could be, uh, if, you know, we went down and, and had this agreement with, um, Olson Middle School with this reciprocal use. I know that something that Olson needs is a track and a pool, and that's something that we also need in that area. Um, but what happened to those renderings of, of that?
Remember when we presented Olson, I believe it was Commissioner Brandon Martin?
Yeah, she cussed us out.
That basically said, no, 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 don't, you know, basically, that was removed. Yeah, she felt it was premature, we, we hadn't talked to anybody in the, in the community.
Right.
Um, I think now with the, with the, with the new superintendent, we'll, we'll revisit that, but I think it's important that we do there what we did in, in, in all these parks, that we actually had public meetings.
Absolutely.
And met with, with the residents.
Well, that's what I'm saying. I don't want to wait until we're doing, we can simultaneously, like, at least have a plan so that if the opportunity presents itself, we, we know what, you know, our vision is for that area. So maybe that's at another time at another meeting, but I don't want to forget about that.
One thing I need to really say about that, when they go to clean that place up, before they do any sodding, they need to put it in the short grass, so they're wasting time. Because whatever we do over there, whether it's a basketball, or soccer, or whether it's football, or you need the short grass, not, not St. Augustine, like, or Frost Park, or, or, because that's just a waste of money.
No, that, that, that's, all that grass is bad, I mean, not all grasses are the same, in, in particular for the different sports, you know, and, you know, that's why I think it's important that we do explore that artificial turf, because when you're going to play in the grass the way we need to play for certain sports, you might be mowing twice a week.
Yeah, well, I'm just saying that just don't go and waste your money on St. Augustine, I don't care what you do, but that, just don't put regular grass and cover it up. You're wasting thousands of dollars.
We know grass.
Thank you.
Sure.
Do you need approval for?
We can't do it, we can't do it here, but we can kind of give consensus.
You know, borrowing and, and looking at the different rates.
I'm for it.
Moving forward, on consensus on the funding option.
On the funding plan that was presented, do we have consensus on that? Everyone has said yes.
Yes.
Bank loan financing, let's be very clear. I, I think, I, I also think, um, something that would be really, really good to do is to maybe post it on social media, just a rendering of what's coming, what's been approved, what to look forward to. I, I know that a lot of our residents, they see building, building, cranes in the sky, different type of birds now, this is what I hear. And, um, it'd be nice for us to say, look, this is something that we unanimously agreed on, this is something that is going to be coming forward. Our parks master plan, just some slides of coming soon, however y'all want to put it, but.
With a timeline, I think a timeline would be very.
That's what I'm saying, however they want to put it, but just to keep, you know, Dania Beach residents, um, excited that we're actually doing more than just approving developments.
Absolutely, Mayor, I think that's very cool.
That's a great idea, put signs. That's a great idea. Put signs on all the parks.
Yeah, and we just heard what, a couple days ago from DOT that they will be conveying the 1.4 acres to build the park garage for free. There's going to be some criteria, but it's a win-win. So things are moving very quickly, but a lot of it is coming because, you know, we're asking for being bold and balancing what we're doing. But it's a very exciting time and, you know, like Eric got emotional. I got emotional that we're working.
Emotional, Eric.
Look, you guys are. He cut his hair. Look what happened.
I could just, I think what she's saying is that we, you know, we all have different personalities and we are all very strong-willed where we want to be. And it's very hard to satisfy all five of us at one point. And I think right now we're all satisfied with what has been presented. So congratulations, staff.
Thank you, Mayor. That's exactly, that's exactly what I meant. That you guys are so passionate and that you're so demanding. And you know what? When I was growing up, they said that opposites attract. But I think eventually opposites oppose. And you want like-minded people. Even if we disagree, the passion from you guys, your desire to want to get things done is very aligned with us.
It's easy to do when you know we have financial.
The means, right.
The money there, when it's what's there, it's like, it's like, you know, winning the lottery, go ahead and spend it, you know? Right now, we're in the best position Danny Beach has ever been in. It's fortunate for the residents that we're able to go out there right now and make it happen under great administration. So we're good to go.
I think it's, part of it is like, we've been talking about it for so long. And now it's like we can do something, let's do something. Instead of talking, let's do it.
So when is the shovel going in the ground?
We're going to move forward with the borrowing and then we'll work to do the RFP for design. We'd like to see, maybe we can work on design build. When you're doing design build versus design construction, I've worked on some very successful projects with BNA and with, you know, experts RDC. And they've worked out really well, you know, stayed on budget and on the timeline. So our next step, Frank, would be looking at the borrowing?
Yeah, I'll be talking with our financial advisors. So we have to assemble professionals. We have to have a bond council, even though it's not a bond issue. It's called bond council. And we'll start working towards that. So we'll have some information for you soon, next couple of weeks.
I was going to say, when do you think we'll have something on the agenda?
Two things.
To it.
Yeah, why not? Next week, why not?
No, not by two things. But I mean, do we think, for example, do we think by the end of June, by the second meeting in June, do you think we'll have something on there?
Yeah.
Excellent.
Well, we'll be, we'll have an update before then, just to, so you know what's going on.
And I really do want to reiterate that I think we want to spread the excitement to the entire community. The new beach improvement signs that are on the beach now look amazing. It has the timeline and it has the date on there. It says when it's coming. And every time I walk past, I'm like, oh, we're going to get beach improvements. So every time I see that kind of signage, we get more excited about it. And so people will, you'll see it on social media. Every time we do something new, the people are getting more excited. So the more that we can do that, I think that'd be great for everyone. So thank you.
Also, it's just as important to get the money. We need to get the right amount of money. And these plans, although they're fantastic and everyone seems to like the aesthetic and the design, it needs to be finalized 100% so we can get some real accurate cost data, especially with, right now with building costs and everything that's going on with the building materials market. We want to get some really good numbers that we can rely on.
And the good thing is that the economies of scale of getting things done sooner rather than later and working on two parks and knowing, we can put an RFP that will allow us to better negotiate the numbers because people know that, hey, we're going to get to build four parks here. So sharpen your pencils when we put that RFP in, that presentation works out. And we're very good at negotiating things and getting things for our citizens.
Randy, are you, in your experience? I'm sorry, I have my mask on. I look, it looks very weird. In your experience with construction with parks, I know that right now, if you just look at the Oasis on Brian Road, it looks like it's already half completed because they're using the tilt walls. Are we able to use tilt walls instead of the other type of way that you can do construction, which I don't know what the name of it is?
For the, for the actual buildings?
Yes.
I, I'm not an architect, so I'm not the best person to ask. I specialize, I'm landscape architect, urban designer and planner. I don't want to answer a building answer because I'm not an architect.
Okay.
I'll leave for, I'm sorry.
I just know that that cuts down a lot of time when it comes to construction. They just already bring the wall and it's already up.
Also, yeah, there's the prefabrication. I think at the end of the day, because we're a coastal community and we do have hurricane, we want to make sure that we stick to the high standards of building codes. And that's a strong requirement. And when we prepare the RFP, those are the questions that we're going to put out and how we save money also on design build. And also picking a firm that's going to do not one park, but is going to do four park and know that the money's there, that will be moving people to really, you know, give us the best deal. Thank you, everyone. You have a pleasure.
Me and the jury.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I know we're adjourned, but while we're here, I just want to let the parks and everybody know. I was over at Danny Cove, because of the tree, and it looks wonderful. By the way, Danny Cove.
That public services, I mean, public services and parks are really working to take care of those small parks.
I know. And it's such a lovely park.